Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We're going to call the meeting of the Board of Commissioners. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Chairman, break down. Here. Commissioner Scott. Here. Commissioner Hyden. Here. Commissioner Darnia. Here. Chairman Ball. Here. Item three, addition of license teams to the agenda. Standing on and approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda, Mr. President.
Discussion. Home favor. Aye. Five minutes previous meeting, item eight through C.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve in five of the minutes of the '07, '19, 2018 meeting, and the '02, 2018, J. M. committee meetings, and the eight, nine, 2018, retiree healthcare workshop.
What next? Discussion. Home favor. Aye. Of the extension of appropriations to come to first item seven, consent to item eight through D.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve consent to items eight through D, A to the monthly summary budget to actual to license of the AP, contract approval request, MACMA Administrator with LLC, contract approval request to library network, and metro controls incorporated to item eight. Support.
Discussion. Bill.
Just on the MACMA Administrator, I wanted to point out that we usually use a different method. We switched to MACMA about a year, year and a half ago, whatever that was, and I had to work with them on a few things, and I got to tell you that MACMA was far above and much better than the other one we had. You know, those were so bad at the bottom of my mind from Wayne Beck. Got to do a really good job in my opinion.
Did Daniel LeDey authorize it or reduce, or did we ask? I mean, this is a lower...
We asked him to revise it and then we used it because our claims were...
Okay.
Home favor. Aye. For the post, or sustaining committee. Yeah, I attended one and a half hours of three-day seminar at EOC. They actually went up there for $7 to $8 a day, three days, and worked brick through their lunch. It was pretty intensive training, and it was about if you were to shut the county down and close things off, and you had no power, et cetera, et cetera, how would you do it? And they added in a new piece this year, and that piece was the financial piece. Daniel was up there, I believe, two days, I was in three, and I just wanted to ask if you would add in just a little bit, let us know why we added a financial piece to the EOC operation.
Well, they requested that finance be there so that someone can monitor the budget and expenses that are being spent during an emergency. Everybody has an important role during an emergency, and it's kind of something that not a lot of people are comfortable doing, so.
Yeah, a lot of comments were made about how good financial was out there, and also took my hat toward metro planning. I had three or four people that came in that mentioned to me after I got there, what a great job of metro planning you did out there. You must have been stellar, so. Did you see those guys? Who were they?
That's it. Go ahead.
Just quick, of course, and today, officials out in the area, we're hosting a rally championship on the various issues that the president, but National Road is back in service. They get new building on. Just going across the border, we did a few pieces of government, but we just opened it up today. And then the other thing with, do not call great out, and you're very striking a phenomenon for human resources. The only numbers he gives you is metro planning.
Fly ball or two ball, I said. Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. One off. So one off? Got you later, Bill. Yeah, I can read the bill.
I'm crazy for you to get there.
Great. Your fly ball?
I was at emergency management meeting today, and that, what Bill was saying was accurate, and they were, this was from non-county people that were at the meeting that participated. They really liked, in fact, that Daniel was there to, I think it's an eye-opener maybe if nothing else, from the release, to save us to spend this, but very high praise was given on your behalf, and so they were happy that the participation was there. We are sending some letters out. We're still trying to work on these vests that we can get to the fire departments. Ken Grant, I think, for $15,000 somehow through, something through his, through the ambulance service somewhere, he's got $15,000 out of play. The money's going to go into the county foundation. They have emergency management fund that they're going to allow us to use, and so if we come across any potential donors, they're not going to be getting money with the county, they're not going to give the money to any individuals. It's going to be the 5123. So from the tax standpoint, it's need to clean. They're going to donate the money and say that it's going to be for this particular purpose, and then as we need the money, we can pull it out and start buying these items. So they're going to start some training, they're hoping to have training going after summer's over. So, and it's all done by volunteers, volunteer training, and then these people are doing it on their own time. So sometime in March, and so we're hoping to, 64,000 is a magic number that gets our fire department service to go in and pull these people out, and then we want to go the next step, 103,000 to get to the ambulance people so that they can be safe and have the proper triage kit, et cetera, carrying along. So just working progress.
Well, I represent you on the 3/18/8 AAA, the Frenchman, the House of Nations, they're all very pleased that the notice has been approved. It's key to financing as soon as this program is done.
Howard. A couple, two, three things. First of all, I attended the help, our local effort, and I'll report on the lead study that was conducted. The, as you know, they did the store-out sampling around the Mill Grass building in Port Huron. They were not able to identify anyone in the area that had any kind of lead poisoning or, because of that. Therefore, the feeling is, if there is any elevation in lead in children or adults, it probably comes from the fact they live in a home that was built prior to 1986 when lead-based paints were used inside and out, and so I guess if you live in a home older than 86, and you paint with lead-based paints and paints in that...
Don't chew the wood.
Don't chew the wood. Don't chew the wood, especially with paint. The other thing, I attended the park commission meeting, and I've enclosed a list of activities. I thought I requested Fort Grasset and Goals, and all of those that are underlying, those are all reserve facilities, and you can see how active Fort Grasset and Goals have been, just, you know, really active. And coming up at the end of the month with park stays from the museum out there, it's going to be a big, big weekend for the end of the month. But I want to also draw your attention to this park and what is happening out here. These are all scheduled reserve activities for homeless, and this park is what, 40 years old, something like that, and so, you know, it's, it's starting to be utilized. Thus far, when our staff takes account of the zip codes of the people that appear, it's primarily since their family people coming out to participate here. So as parks get developed, they get utilized by our constituents, and that's, that's a good thing to know. The other thing that was discussed in Park and Rec was metal roofing. I emailed you regarding that. If you have any questions or concerns, the big issue there is that the requirements for historical restoration, it has to be historically correct, and so we're kind of caught in the limelight. The Friends of the Lighthouse have agreed to pay the difference between a regular metal roof and a historically correct one. The only thing, and this is my proposal, so I'll take point for it, and that is that they contribute over 10 years, their share of the $30,000 difference in price, and so they can continue their voluntary. I feel very strongly that we do not want to destroy the volunteers.
How are we paying for the roof, not for the $10,000, for the rest of the roof?
That will come from Park and Rec.
So you're going to, that will be, you'll pay that back in 10 years.
Right.
Yes. I know we approved it, or was approved before, the BMX contract at Goals. There's nothing in here that goes, goes to the BMX activities that they put, there's some, they've been instructing, they've been instructing, that's all.
They're not having a crazy self there?
You know, Dennis Doobers here, he might be able to address that. Do you know anything about the BMX activities out there?
No, I think basically, like you said, is that it's not as strong as it once was. They go through a lot of leadership changes, so that kind of, the numbers fluctuate with that, and you have leaders that come in, and they attract a lot of new riders, and by new riders, I mean people of all ages, because BMX is open to adults as well, but with the leadership changes, the numbers change as well, so it does fluctuate, and it has been as of late.
Now, I saw that, you're on the video there, could you comment on the volunteers at Fort Grasset, kind of park?
Sure.
Excuse me, the lighthouse kind of park.
Yeah. The Friends of the Fort Grasset Light is a wonderful group that has dedicated a lot of hours and time, not just finances, but volunteer hours to doing demolition, painting, you know, providing programs related to fundraising at the site, and of course, their big event, which is Sandfest, so if you, any of you have been to Sandfest, they are directly responsible for that event, which raises funds for restoration projects at the site. They've raised thousands and thousands of dollars, we know, towards projects, and they helped recently fund some porches on the back of the duplex, front door on the single keepers dwelling, restoration on the interior, which they're working on right now is our parlor and living room area. They're actually helping cover the cost of restoration there, new windows in that building that are all historic and correct, so they do a lot for the site, and we're fortunate to have them to help move the 25-year plan along at the light station for its restoration goals.
Well, thank you. I, you know, just from a personal standpoint, isn't it the volunteers in Park and Rec, but all of the volunteers that we have in the county, and maybe, I, sometimes I feel that we probably need to do more to let them know how much we appreciate them and their volunteerism, whether it's for Park and Rec, or the library, the ambulance control, and just, and all of our committees that they volunteer for. So anyway, just have to, let them know that we appreciate their efforts on behalf of the county. That's it.
I got a couple things here. First off, you've received the copy of the actual aerial changes that are potential for our hospitalist's retiree healthcare. You've got what were currently listed, we've got two different options that were proposed. Actually, there was five or six different options, but we just bring together the license for an option one and an option five. It shows you how much that means of funding, and you see all the different ones. There's another workshop next Thursday at 4:00 PM.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, 22nd. 22nd. And I fully intend to putting this on the agenda, first, we discover, if we're going to take any action, we need to do it soon. Then there's the other piece, so there's plan and design change, but then there's the eligibility, for the moment, that we need to talk about. That will require a lot of different meetings and sitting around and talking about a bunch of different case scenarios. So here's the numbers, something for you to take a look at, and there will be more to come. Any questions?
Yes, I asked you on the phone, and you and I weren't sure about, I don't know if it was a big one or a bunch, I'm just curious. What happens when, even now, if you go, you don't want to, you put 4% of the fund, you're like, that's a part of the decision.
They can act as a contributing once they get 50%. And so that either puts it into the budget, or even put it towards a pension fund, or...
They can go to a pension fund?
If they choose.
Yeah, okay. So once you get 40% of the money, then you can do that for pension.
You can't take 40 out of this fund to move it, or they can adjust it or adjust in this fund at the zero standpoint, so that more is planned.
They put some large developments over the last couple of years.
They must think lots of power cash, but we do, they do a lot of times, they just know and stop, so they don't, you know. But, you know what? Just came in a whole break.
Yeah, yeah. We can't still too fleet, gets us out of the, gets us out of the, the bad kid goes, right, for the state, and that's where I want to be, to not take action on, very admin, I think everybody was on CP, and not, and not let it escape.
I was a little disappointed in the reporting on the paper, maybe I missed it, but they did not emphasize that this state handed, that we hit the 40% mark. Because we've been operating at the 30% mark over the last five years without making any changes in retiree healthcare. This coming out because of state in, it's not something...
Fair to go to.
Although I must say, I think it's wise for us to try and get this as close to fully funded as we can, so I'm not opposed to the requirement, it's just that, you know, we can't kick this ball down, you know, canned down on the street anymore, we've got to deal with it.
I think we took, we made a good leap, four or five years ago, and we made the change, we made pushes from where we were about 2% to 30%, and now the state is causing us to do it again, which is probably a good thing. If the state wasn't doing it, then what would we be doing, I don't know, but if the state is pushing that, we get the sense there.
Well, I'm, I'm actually very supportive of that. You know, usually, what we get from the state is cut our revenue, is cut our revenue, is cut our revenue, that's all they do. At least now, they're helping us cut our expenses, and I think we could use more of that kind of leadership from the state.
Next thing I want to talk about was the fire authority, the RNC fire authority, the great top, and the town, and stuff, and when Tom Conrad came down, Tina, who are going to be the new dispatch director, and we had the person from pager company, and we've had issues in the southern part of the county, truthfully, probably not to the extent that I thought, because of feedback that I have continued to give that, if we get an email, we send it on, and problem involved, and, you know, so on and so forth, and after sitting through that meeting last night, and they still have an issue, probably longer than I anticipated. So what we really need to do, and it's really not a pager problem, it's a coverage problem, you know, so when we first built the system out with additional towers, they had put about two more things, and I know, for example, for the city's sidecar that had earlier, we had to, so county put a repeater on top of one of the water towers, right? The signals and RNC, they definitely had issues. We need to, we need to look at doing that, we need to really look at doing that sooner or later. They're frustrated down there with it, and they totally understand their frustration. Now, that enthuses that communication, just Bill Greatout himself, we didn't, we ran the, tons of truth about it, but the agents, there's still a lot of problems. You know, I tried to explain that to them last night, of course, everybody, you know, thought that's all, you know, what is that, I don't know, it's right, but you tell me, I did not, but then we had a regulation issue with the view, because they don't, you know, that lines of communication.
You know, I've, I've been involved in these conversations over the years, too, and I'm surprised to hear now, it's like they did, they terminated right here.
Yeah, there's, pager's not a signal after the guys explained everything from pager companies last night, you know, did a very good job on it, and, you know, I guess, I mean, the founder, it's...
There's something that's still to be worked on, I'm still, too, the one... His explanation of, you know, reaching to the border and not going over, it's almost impossible for these other companies to accomplish, because they, the way they set them up this way. I think what you have to do is put a line of cover great on the middle and get toward the shore, and then we will go that way, which you can't do that, so try to shoot a straight line down the shoreline and cover everything, it's almost impossible to do, and we've been fighting that same thing with Horizon, and trying to get that stuff to work, and these calls work the same way, it's a line to stay.
With the phone thing, though, what they've done is they've narrowed down the power of the system in the United States, and that's why you guys down river are having problems that you didn't have before. So what's the problem that they overlap? You know, I mean, that's not a problem for us as customers.
They're not using, we're using the 800 system over here, they're still on...
VHF.
VHF over there, a couple different kinds of VHS, so our signals aren't going to interfere with their signals.
But I was talking about the phone part.
Yeah, I'm talking about that also.
Their phones on VHF also?
Oh, no. No, you don't. So, he said they have the same issue, they had to turn the power down. Corey gave a turk sample last night, they were shooting 20 watts of power to the old building, and they put the new building out, they actually moved further away from, of Canada, and they made it put the power at 5 watts instead of 20.
Yeah, there's a fucking agreement between the countries, like Canada denies all of the stocks, so I mean, that's a federal fix, that, that fight needs more power, a lot of that, as well, but as far as the local issue now, I mean, and Tina, I'm going to give you a very specific margin order to get on that and find out what's going to cost of...
Tina said, I talked to her today, yes.
Yeah, Tina's been very responsible.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, the big thing is, when we, when I quickly asked the question, when you had your old pagers, did you ever have any dead ones? Oh, yeah, the same spots. Well, the only difference is, when you had a pager, you didn't have direct contact with it all the time, you either worked or didn't. With these new, even their makers, they move in and out, so when I walk from here, and I'm walking over there, it goes out of service, and then comes back in, you hear a noise. So their cats have been hearing, coming in and out, or before it did the exact same thing, they just didn't know, and it just...
That thing bombs a lot, too.
Oh, they're running them all the time.
We said, again, as mentioned, they're too ready to, every, 30 seconds, have to bomb.
Yeah, so definitely got to get that, that kind of...
And you can make the bomb disappear a little bit, right? If you, if you keep them down as high as you can under your body, they're going to bomb more, and they were purposely doing that. If they were to set them on, on the table, correct, they would have better reception than you would have. That was a...
But there's no denying that there was...
There's an issue, but there's not an issue with the radio, there's not an issue with our system, it's the state's.
And it gets complicated when you're starting to talk about the county, the state, and the FCC all being involved, and how this is going to work. We can do the best way to do it if we stay on board with the FCC, but what are we going to do? This idea of turning our power down when Canada turned up, Canada turned down, Canada turned up, maybe it'll all work, but...
I said, we need to be necessary to, we just have the same system playing in this situation, what would be the cost coming in?
But the pagers are good pagers, they seem to work all over the state, Michigan, 100 thousand units all over the country, wherever they are, but unfounded, just, everybody says they work the phones, you get the coverage, and we're just short on coverage where we are.
But I know the same, they're not missing calls, because, you know, that was the part of the conversation, somebody nice on there, who'd be liable, and I guess, but, you know, first respond, look at it point-blank, says, we're not missing any calls, because they do have cell phones, the pages are on work, so some occasionally, but it's not, you know, that they're not getting to a response.
So just adding on to this conversation, getting back to the federal problem, Canadian and United States problem, that's something we should be picking up to our, our congressmen and our senators, and get them...
To be wary of dangers.
They got, they got a bit, and kind of... Now, we run into this problem with the Blue Eye Bridge, you've got two different countries, and it's not the cities and the counties that have all of the jurisdiction, it's the federal government in both places, and in Canada, they have an administrator that is in charge of all of the Canadian departments, as it contains the bridge, there's a super manager. In the United States, it's, it's, it's just confusion, you got, you got somebody who's the director of agriculture on the bridge, you got customs and border protection, you got all these different federal officials, and there's no treaty that they report to, they're not like department heads under a foreign administrator, which they have in Canada.
So you asked a question about that, that came up, that was in the two polls, they have a lot of departments on, which are staff, right, you know, full time, and the problems with paging with the volunteer, how many of them, you know, something like this.
Well, Cohen's only, only volunteer in that kind of is the north, right? So it's your Aragona and your Richmond and...
Everybody else on a hard line.
They're on, so they're all sitting in the building, and when it goes off, they don't have to break out to page.
No, they, they do have similar problem upstate New York, when you're right along the St. Mark Seaway in that, with cell phones, and I can only assume which pages, what they have about your fire department, because anywhere you get near the border, they're touching the power.
But, but to the point of fix on this, I'm sure, and explaining some of the confusion and all that, and we probably need to go out and look at if there's like bad spots in the county, you know, if there's some other dead zone, or if there's some, you know, something that's going on, so...
And it's like, as I mentioned last night, if there's a new building passing on the right of way, then these cell phone companies, and I'm assuming other companies that do this type of stuff, can put up those lights and towers in the right of way and shoot them. They're going to shoot 40 mile each direction, so if you've got a battery or half a mile, one there that shoots a half mile, quarter mile each direction, you've got something in coverage. So we're hoping that that's what the Rising, the White House, and I'm assuming the Republicans can only do the same thing, except that they, they, the more active they are, the computers, the better off we are.
Don't they, if they can go to New York, would the Congress put in that or Paul? That's the thing that if they...
Take the tour.
Take them there, they're a day to four day weekend, and check things out. I, I understand, it's not like the Niagara Falls, as well, with the...
So enough of pagers, going to work on that. Couple other things I just need today on the St. Clair end, and this is just kudos to the county, someone's board staff, these projects are so big, right? There's so many different moving pieces and stuff that it's too hard really for any one person to try to manage, just like the case of Jeff Allen's and Dave Strug, you know, we had, we had a handful of others, all we're doing on these things, we're going through, game case per agenda, we've got to talk about all the different items and stuff, and the task, then you got a lot of different, it just holds everybody's feet in the fire a little bit more, but the county's very involved from, I mean, Brownfield, it's NDA, state incentive programs, you know, and there was six different items that came out of today that were just... programs, you know, and there was six different items that came out of today that were just different things that needed to be addressed. One of the items that I had ironically is there's two poles that need more room from front St. Clair end, um, light poles that they have in New York, which I reached up to my government first, of course, in 2018, and they're working on getting poles up soon and later. So it doesn't sound, you know, like a big thing, but it's just everybody has, you know, there's, you know, talking about 3530, you know, down the last one, letters need to be rolled, you know, just some of these little small minutias in this process. But one thing that was, was very apparent is all these funding mechanisms. So we have all these layer financing, for example, there's a big case loan that's part of the St. Clair end project, and the MDC letter, it's a second piece of it. So a lot of these MDC incentives, a lot of these other financing mechanisms are tied to these MDC incentives, and they're all tied to that new account, right? So there's millions of dollars that are, are at risk potentially if certain things don't fall and happen and they need to dump. So sitting through these and hearing, I understand that, but you were, you were saying council numbers today, that was a real good eye opener for them, and you're going to do that, so we'll, we'll start you up and put in place, meet every two weeks, and each one will, um, before this, uh, it's going to be a lot very long.
Yeah, could I, um, do a question?
What?
Uh, no, go ahead, that's good. Um, I guess, back on the retired health, uh, I could make, personally, I would make the leading that's true. Um, we, we've talked about this also in terms of how long the funds are going to last in terms of years. Could we get that information as well, as the percentage numbers?
Oh, fourteen to seventeen is what I'm, I'm most.
Yeah.
And that's actually the actual, whether or not we're going to do it with the help or, 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 or,[757.41] So, so we went through there, but the thing with the City Flats that really struck me, so the owners of the St. Clair Inn have 110 rooms, that's not enough, they know it. That's why they're buying the Harrington, they have additional 70 rooms. They're actually going to do their back of the house, they're going to run a lot of the accounting for the hotels, they're going to do a lot of the sports, it's going to be done at Harrington. So that gives them the opportunity to push business to the Harrington, because all the center room and weddings and so on and so forth. Well, the City Flats, we want to do, they have 18 wedding work, okay, City Flats to tell. And they only got 36 rooms. City Flats needs additional rooms, so the Harrington, top 0.2 miles away, fits, fits very good. So the St. Clair Inn needs the Harrington, but the St. Clair Inn also needs the City Flats, when they have their, you know, event. City Flats, like I said, needs Harrington, probably having a convention center, you know, book some of large conventions, it's a surplus, only 1,000 rooms a town, they all have 200 additional rooms in the floor. So that helps now that assists the larger conventions that come to town with the additional rooms that are going to be, be put in the mix. So they're all, this whole thing is, is, I didn't think about the significance of Harrington as much as women and the City Flats.
Yep.
Didn't understand any of that, they're going to be putting in, uh, this, they're dumping a ton of money at a place, and it has been.
That, I was telling a couple of you earlier about that tour, and that, when you walk around the top of that building, there isn't a view that isn't breathtaking. And they're all different, it's really, it's really neat. I had to really get up there to see it. And the ballroom is amazing, people couldn't ever afford to build something like that today, and they're taking those windows out front, and they're taking them all the way to the ground, and it's just going to be so dramatic and beautiful, it's going to really be a big draw.
The owner of that project also wants his spirit to be, so I mean, he's going to bring his spirit and, and stuff around, so.
I, 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 you mentioned the convention center, and, and when you go to some of these meetings, you run into some really surprising things. I was at the health board meeting, I didn't mention this, uh, but one of the members attended the National Association of Local Health Officials meeting in, uh, New, in Raleigh, North Carolina, and they're looking for a place for convention for about 150 members in Michigan. And so I contacted Jeff, and then I also contacted, uh, Gino at our convention center, and he's looking into getting the information, he's going to contact their representative for conventions, and get some information out to him. So, uh, hopefully, they were talking about 2021, I believe, is the next time they have an opening that they're looking for, anyway, for a living in Michigan. Uh, the other thing, I attended the I-69 Michigan Development Corporation meeting, I'm over there, totally unrelated thing, but one of the supervisors and one of the townships in Jodsey County is looking to get rid of a whole bunch of blue clay, just come and haul it away. And I talked to Jeff and compared about it, uh, it may be a little bit cost prohibitive, at about $6 a ton to haul it away, uh, and we might be able to get something closer, at cheaper price, that's a big offer, so. Uh, but the idea that these opportunities come up at these meetings, we just, you know, talk to these other people about what opportunities are there.
So do you need to just let me know, register the conference, state conferences, county councils, state, and that?
Excellent.
I'm sure you've pulled that out.
Awesome.
We're going to move on. Uh, citizens wishing to address the board, any citizens wishing to address the board? I'm.
I would.
Okay.
Uh, the matter what's up here?
I'm sorry? No, Phil Carter.
You can talk and then we'll know.
Go ahead, you see it on the record, that's all. But you can go ahead.
You know what we do?
Just take these out after.
I don't, I don't know if. I live on, on water road, I'm just north of the easement, where we had a little water problem, you're familiar with it? But there's this, the water from grassing, it's all the way down, I have a 2152 water, it's about, right now it's nine ounces. And the last three years, they built a 40 by 60 pole barn on the, that side of the roads, two houses on this side of the road with a pole barn, everybody else is concrete. There's no ditches. And word is that you guys are going to put a ditch in. So there's a catch basin, I mean easement, I'm not with that, easement's my property. The catch basin, I've cleaned it off for 28 years, and it doesn't take the water that comes down the road now, and if you put a ditch in, it's not going to take that water either. Over 28 years, I built a berm up along the road, so water wouldn't come into my yard. And the water comes all the way from the parking lot at Amos, at one time it had a lot of animals in there, so there were species in it, the dumpster sits there, everybody's water runs in the road, right down the road, and it's going in my yard. So I built the berm up, over time the road comes up, twice I built the berm up, I bought a long dirt for my Asenhardt, and, uh, this spring, you guys, the road commission come down, must put five train loads of it up, stolen out of the road. Water came down the road, made a rain, and turned right down my driveway, the whole road. I got a video from my eye here. My concern is, you guys are going to put a ditch in, the catch basin won't take the water that's coming down the road now, it's gouging the road out, and it's a safety hazard for cars. My concern is when you take, put it in a ditch, it's still not going to take it, it's spilling into the easement in my neighbor's son's yard right now. Um, I'd like to know when you guys are doing this.
When, I just want to clarify, so when you say when, you've got the road commission, which has their own separate board, people, a lot of times assume that the road commission, county board commissioners, community, a lot of times people say St. Clair County, road commission has their own funding mechanism, and they have their own.
What commission do I have now?
This is the St. Clair County Board Commissioners.
Uh, Chuck, you didn't know, this is not the latter, they're going back, and they'll talk for questions, that's the idea, and he hasn't got back to me yet, and they talked to me the other day. So, we'll get back to this. Well, that sounds like they're telling you guys to put a ditch in, they're putting a ditch in. Your supervisor should know, who's asking? No, no, doesn't mean anything. They said, oh, we'll have the former call you, when you have the call, there's no one, no one knows the call. I'm, I'm waiting for, for question, and, uh, I'll only get them around the seat.
Take me to one of the.
That's it, yeah, I, I have this letter, right?
No, I'm, I'm, I don't want to follow through with that, though. I want to do the right thing.
This is on the county green. No, just coming off the road, and the berm depends on the next.
Who's your partner for water handle?
I, I hate to interrupt this, but in public audio, you used to have three minutes, and it's highly unusual that commissioners are not supposed to buy, it's your turn to buy. Uh, and so what I would ask is that, uh, you, you, we, we're aware of your issue, and Sergeant Barnes, I'm going to have to ask you to.
I'm going to say, Dave will follow through then.
Dave will follow.
Uh, anybody else pushing to address the board at this time? You business approval of coming disbursements, NDA.
This time I'd like to move to approve county disbursements for July 2018, the amount of $99,98,178, please sign.
Work. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Greatthaw?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Tannen?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
I am D, the 2018 number, Brian Moore, Justice Assistant Crown Attorney.
I would make a motion to approve the joint dispute year 2018, Edward Brian Moore, Justice Assistant Crown Attorney application with the city of Port Huron, total of $33,805, with the county's portion being $12,804.
Work. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mr. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Greatthaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tannen?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
I can see the assignment and assumption of lease between international dumpster park and JSA Equities, Colorado.
Chairman Bowman, I would move to approve the assignment and assumption of the lease between PSI, LTD, and JSA Equities LLC.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, close. I am D, the non, the, 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 not a, the JSA Equities, Colorado.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the non-irritant release of JSA Equities for return from 2027 to 2027.
Support. Uh, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
At times, I suppose, I'm going to need the library board appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I move this time to appoint Michael Carpen to the library board for a five-year term, expired date 28/23.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask, can I track through the request of late here in the month of summer?
I would make a motion to approve the agreement with private healthcare services for her LLC doing businesses like her medicine, for a term of 91,18 to 830,19, the amount of 830,000, $100,000, $28,000.
Day of her, no. Um, that dollar figure, 828,000, is that just for the services you're going to provide? There's no medical supplies at all, they're going to, it's just a labor?
Yes.
Yeah, and always that's a moving target to, you know, how to make a medical, well, it's pushing the union. Roll call.
Mr. Tannen?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mr. Greatthaw?
Yes.
Mr. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
I am D, the self-forced, self-attained order.
Mr. Chairman, I move the approval of self-forced and aid change order number one, in the amount of $51,962. Uh, comment on that? Uh, we may be appearing, going through these issues kind of fast, we covered all of this in committee, and so, uh, it's been passed over once already, so we seem to be going through it kind of fast, that's one reason.
Uh, roll call.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Greatthaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tannen?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Um, Mr. Hyden? Uh, yes. Chairman Bowman? Can you break this low a dollar?
Self-forced, self-attained order.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve self-forced and self-aid change order number two, in the amount of $176,540.
Work. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mr. Greatthaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tannen?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Chairman, I, the Region 10 prepaid location, uh, on the, on the.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Region 10 prepaid indication health funding plan, in the amount of $259,920, and to add one part-time, no-loss position, and one full-time health educator position to the health department man.
Second? Discussion. Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Tannen?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Greatthaw?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hyden?
Yes.
Mr. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
I am D, Resolution 18 dash 16, lending parts of St. Clair County employees retirement system ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt the Resolution 18 dash 16, lending parts of St. Clair County employees retirement system ordinance.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, close. I am K, the St. Clair County transportation study room, St. Clair.
Mr. Chairman, I move the approval of the task to agreement for the 2018, 2019, between St. Clair County Transportation Study and St. Clair.
Work. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, close. I am D. Well.
Just a reminder that, you know, just like at lunch, this is coming Monday, the 20th, and if you have not, I'll speak to you on the week, please let me know by tomorrow if you can come. Um, also, next Monday, the 20th, our new animal control director, um, that will be her first day, her name is Amy Warner, and she comes from Jersey County Animal Control. Uh, also, this week, we finalized the sale of nine Letman products to DTE, and they are putting those towards the, our power plant project out in Australia.
Do you know we have just completed left now?
Just finished, yeah.
What was the project?
Uh, final sale price was about $955,000 per night. Yes. Um, the.
I see.
The law firm that's working on the opioid lawsuit has contacted Carrie and requested an abundance of information and data from the county, so she is working on gathering that data from, um, our departments, and she hopes to get that information to them by October 1st. Um, and lastly, we are working on the 2019 budget, um, we, our, our goal is to have a process at next month's meeting, to discuss rate agreements during meetings, so, um, and then, of course, the adoption of the budget will probably be the first meeting[1728.83]